We ask your blessing this day on this county in which we live, on this elected body, both the school board and the Board of Supervisors, as we've recently toured the new projects for the future of the county. We also ask your blessings, your continued blessing on our, the freedoms that we all enjoy, on the men and women who each day risk their lives, both in public safety and the military, to protect and ensure that we continue to have meetings like this all across our great nation. In thy name we pray. Amen.
We'll now move on to item five on the agenda, which is a request to postpone, delete, add, or change the order of presentation. Do I hear any from the board members? I get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All favor of the motion is presented. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. You need to, Joe, you want to approve your agenda, it's pretty much the same, but go ahead.
So is there a motion to approve the school board agenda as presented this evening?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
So have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero.
We'll now have our first two public comment periods. We invite members of the public to share the thoughts and matters and issues that are germane to the county business. If you're here to speak on an item on tonight's agenda that is having, well, we're not having any public hearing, so I'll leave that out. This is not a form of political campaigning or promoting a business, please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility. Please keep your comments to three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you're representing a group, so that staff can get your name and address correct for the minutes. Please sign in with your name and address. Thank you.
Figured I'd come up and just save you some time. Jamie Timberlake, 1450 Schroeder Road. I spoke at the school board meeting the other night at their public hearing last year. We discovered something a little late in the budget process, and we're not able to correct it, but I hope both boards can work on it this year. We worked very hard a few years back to get county employees and school board employees on the same, you know, pay scale and step scale, and that included healthcare. And I was unaware until the last budget season that the school board and the teachers on their side had dropped a little behind in the last few years in keeping the teachers at that scale. So I hope you can address that in this year's budgets. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake, for your comments. Seeing none of, no one else, I'll close the first two public comment periods. We'll now move on to item 10A, update on the elementary realignment attendance zones. I'm not sure who's taking that from me.
Dr. Jones? Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is really just a verbal update. As you all know, when we open Powhatan Middle School, the new Powhatan Middle School next year, we're going to be moving some sixth graders, about 10 classrooms of sixth graders out of Pocahontas Elementary School. That's going to free up some classroom space there. Both Flat Rock Elementary and Powhatan Elementary are both at about 92, 93% capacity, so they're pretty close to capacity. So we are beginning the process of looking at our elementary attendance boundaries and moving students, with the goal of moving students from Flat Rock and Powhatan to Pocahontas, so that we can maximize the classroom space that we have, and ensure that we are able to continue being in these three elementary schools for as long as possible, and balance out the classes and the enrollment at each of those schools. We have a committee that we are going to be meeting Thursday night is our first meeting, called the Elementary Realignment Committee. We have three citizens from each of the five magisterial districts that are going to be on the committee, as well as school staff, and then we'll be working with KNC Associated, who are demographers who work on this professionally, in terms of looking at rezoning and those types of things in school districts around the state, that have been assisting us and will assist us in this process. And our goal is, is that by December, we'll bring back a recommendation to the school board on redrawing some elementary lines to, again, help balance out our attendance at our three elementary schools, and make sure we're maximizing enrollment space at each of these three schools.
Any questions or comments from any board members? So, Dr. Jones, so you already have selected a committee. I know you had some advertisements in newspapers, I think, on Facebook and stuff, so you obviously got participation?
Yes, we had really good response to that, in terms of the number of people who wanted to apply. We wanted to, as you do with any committee, make sure it's a manageable number that you can work with, and felt that three from each magisterial district, when you add in the staff that needs to be present, was a good working number.
Was it mostly, is the committee made up of elementary school parents? Because it wouldn't serve any purpose, or, I don't mean it's bad for somebody who has a high school student, had to serve on the committee, I'm not picking on those people if they want to be active.
Yeah. No, we, we have mainly, we had an application that had a few questions. One of them is, are you a parent or a community member? And everybody, everybody on the committee has elementary age children. We also have some community organizations, like the Cub Scouts, youth football, PYAA represented, that kind of filling dual roles, so we're trying to get as, a wide cross-section of the community represented on the committee.
Okay. So that will take place in December, is when the school board will see it?
The goal is for them to have a first viewing of it in November, and shooting for approval in December, so that we give any family whose school may be moved plenty of time before it actually occurs in the fall of 2018.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, how frequently do we have to do this?
The last time that we did it is when Flat Rock opened, so that was 2006, eight, 2008?
It's really ad hoc, based on situation, right? It's not on some kind of scrolling schedule?
No, it's really just based on when we moved the fifth, as part of the whole plan to open the middle school, and to make sure that we had, that we can afford to open the middle school and build the middle school. We moved the fifth grade back, if you'll remember, to the elementary schools, and that created a situation at both Powhatan Elementary and Flat Rock where we were close to capacity. We have seen some growth, particularly in those two zones, and really, it's just a matter of us now having the space, once the sixth graders leave, to be able to redistribute some of our students to where we have classroom space.
So have you taken a wild guess about how many specific individual students are going to be affected, just the ballpark? Do we have no idea at this juncture?
No, I mean, we, probably, it'll be about 150 students, maybe a little more, a little less, depending on how close we get to our goal. We could conceivably get all three schools to 83% capacity, which would be great right now. As I said, we have two at 93, and that would give us room for growth in all three areas of the county, elementary zones.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Jones, for that update.
Yep.
When I move on to 10B, presentation, an update on future use of the Pocahontas Middle School.
Yes, we have a presentation. Mr. Tibbs is going to lead that presentation, and then certainly county staff can, can jump in whenever they would like, but this is just a, an update on kind of where we are in this process, and it's still early, and still some decisions to make that we'll talk about at the end of the presentation. Mr. Tibbs?
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for taking the tours with us this afternoon. Hope you enjoyed what you saw, and saw some good progress. As we come together this evening, one of the things that we do need to begin the discussions about, or continue the discussions about, is the repurposing of Pocahontas Middle School. And the clicker's coming. Okay. In FY 2019, which is next fall, Pocahontas Middle School will be closed as students and staff are relocated to Powhatan Middle School. The decision on how this facility has not been made in terms of repurposing and actual cost impacted by this. The roof and mechanicals of this facility will have to be replaced regardless of how this facility is going to be used, and the preliminary estimate is about $2 million. The source for that document, or the source for that information comes from the CIP that was approved last year. And so these next two slides will take you through a little bit of the existing conditions that are at the, it's not working. There we go.
$2 million, new AV system.
That's right. So the next two slides will go into the mechanicals, and what we currently have in that building. If you'll look at the colored graph here, or the colored floor plan, in the yellow highlight is the current chiller and boiler. The chiller that is serviced in this area was installed in 2007, and then the boiler system that services this area was installed in 2011. You can see that this particular chiller and boiler system service pretty much the area in yellow, to the, on the right of your screen, is the 1993 renovation and addition of the gym area. It does service the lower B hall, which is the old 1949 elementary school, and then the, the upper B hall. And the science classrooms, D 125, D 123, and C 116 and C 122, they were also part of that remodel that was done back in 1993. And so this is the newest chiller and boiler system that is at that facility. And the blue highlight is the oldest, and you can see these years, these units have outlived their life expectancy tremendously. The chiller, the 50-ton chiller was installed in 1976, the 40-ton chiller was installed in 1979, and then the boiler was installed also in 1979. And you'll notice that these areas that are serviced here is the A hall, the C hall predominantly, the cafeteria area, and then the D hall. The roofing system is of concern for this building. There are several areas. The top left picture, that was actually a picture taken before some repair work was done this summer, and so what we did this past summer is we went and laid a five-foot wide, 200-foot-long section of EPDM to cover this area. The right side, it's not, it's in bad shape. There are no holes in it at this point, but it is in, in very bad shape, and it's an area that we are watching. The bottom two pictures are just some pictures while I was up on the roof one day with the roofer, just so that you can kind of see the roof that we've got. Many sections of the roof is, it's coming up from just weather and wear and tear. You'll notice that the majority of this roof is the rubber roof, with a section of it going down the lower A hall, down C hall, is what they call the built-up roof, which has the rock aggregate on it. There are sections of that roof that we have had over the years, we've had to go in and pull back the rock and patch and replace. And so the roof at this facility, very much like the old junior high facility, is a work in progress. Every time it rains, we usually have something that comes up, and so we are repairing and replacing certain sections of that. And so you'll see, based upon this floor plan, the highlights, in 1993, in the purple, that was the EPDM was put in there, and so that has been well past 20 years. What happens with that rubberized roof is that it contracts and it expands, it contracts and it expands. And where we are now with that roof is, it's almost like tires on, on a car that just sit. It's become dry rotted, and there are small cracks in it, and things of that nature. And so if we do get heavy rains, that's when we usually tend to see the most issues. One of the areas that we are working on, and that I've got some help coming for, is over the top of the stage area on the gym, and that seems to be one of our, our big sore spots at this point in regards to the roof. But you'll see the purple area is predominantly EPDM from 1993. The 1996 is that built-up roof with the aggregate in the A hall, C hall, cafeteria, and down the hallway going towards the cafeteria, and then in 2014, there was a complete redo of that end section of C hall with the EPDM rubberized roof in that section. Some general notes in regards to this building. We do have humidity issues in the D hall section of this building. That section has a dehumidifier in each of the classrooms. We have not experienced leaks roof-wise, but the humidity is a constant issue in that section of the building. One item of note in regards to this building is, it is tied in many ways to Pocahontas Elementary School. The fire suppression system and the well pump service Pocahontas Elementary School. And so those areas would need to continue to be operational in order for that building to have the fire suppression system and to have their water supply. For Pocahontas Middle School, structural plumbing and electrical systems are in pretty good working condition. Future for this school, there are three goals that we just wanted to outline for you tonight for your consideration.
Excuse me, Jason?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if that's all right. Do you want to be interrupted during this?
Certainly.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. Can you, well, if you want to back up one slide, that's fine, but it was all words anyway. I was thinking about, when you just talked about the pump house?
Yes.
And the fire suppression system serving the elementary school has to remain operational. Would that impact how we use the quote-unquote "old" middle school as far as the volume of water required? Has anybody looked into that? Because we ran into that issue, you know, when we're doing the new construction?
Right.
Stuff up here.
I, I, we have not looked into that, but I, I don't anticipate that it would be an issue, because the, the system is built, it, it's not a, like the water tower is, has water in it ready to be immersed. This system pulls off of the reserve tank that is on-site, that is right there by the pump house, that has water in it at all times. Irregardless of how this building is used, that will maintain, that, that water will maintain in that tank. Thanks.
I guess it would tie to whatever the adaptive reuse you choose to do.
Correct.
The amount of water be required, if you had a decision to be made at that time, whether you would supplement it, or whatever.
Yes. Anything else? Okay.
Who owns, who is, who owns that water system?
We do.
It is?
It's a well.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a well. And we just, for note, this past summer, we had to replace the pump in the well. So for the future, the first item that we did, want you to consider, or brought to you for consideration, is the parks and recreation, taking the gym and the fields. That was part of the, the CIP that was mentioned last year as well. If the gym and the fields are utilized, we have looked at it and looked at that being a multipurpose area as well, in terms of having historical artifacts placed in the gym lobby for the community to be able to, to see, because that, that gym lobby is very nice. When Dr. Prince and I were there last year, we had a lot of stuff. Dr. Prince was very good about putting stuff in, in those trophy cases, and so it's a very big, open, well-lit area for those types of items. Goal two would be the preservation of the 1937 Pocahontas High School museum. It could be tied into goal three, which could be a dual-purpose admin, administrative use. Goal three could be administrative use and museum, could be administrative office space for either Powhatan County offices, or Powhatan County Public School offices. The school system has done a preliminary analysis of this building, and the yellow highlighted area shows the admin needs if the county school administration, the Powhatan County School administration, was to move from Skaggs Road and other locations into this specific repurpose of Pocahontas Middle School. We currently have staff members in trailers behind Powhatan Elementary School and Pocahontas Elementary School, and then we also have the staff members at Skaggs Road. So decision points that we have to think about and consider? One is who will retain ownership of this building? And that should be number two, sorry. Number two, the funding source. Where will the financial capital come from to replace the roof, and the mechanical systems, and other building modifications that will be needed for its intended purposes? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Williams?
Jason, depending on what option we finally decide upon, wouldn't the $2 million be a number that could be reduced if we only chose to use parts of the school?
Yes, sir. The, the $2 million was if the school in its entirety was going to be utilized for something. So that would be replacing the roof across the entire floor plan, and, and working with the mechanical systems. But if you choose to do certain sections of it?
Correct.
It would be, it would be reduced. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Jason, so later on in the evening, we're going to hear on this energy, energy savings contracting, so to speak. Could this building be included if we chose to do some things with it? Could it be included in that whole process, which?
Yes, sir.
Isn't the purpose of that, they would work with you to replace old antiquated systems with new, and you, so then the $2 million could be reduced? You know?
Yes, sir.
Yes. The, the other item that is attached is the CIP, or page from our school system CIP that, that both boards approved, and this, again, is just trying to give some more cost estimate. It's based on a, it's a rough estimate of about $190 per square feet that you use for any renovation model. But again, it's, it is broken up into the three different uses that the middle school committee came forward with to both boards, and it also includes a little bit of information onto private business partnerships, but there's no figure attached to that, a monetary figure attached to that. I will point out that, you know, the, the one thing that we know moving forward is that, you know, there's some decisions that need to be made, but we're going to need to make sure we keep the gym open, the fields open, for parks and rec to use, because there's such a, a need for that throughout the county. And that's why we put the note in there about a temporary home for some of the historical artifacts commemorating the high school and its origination. Could be placed in that gym lobby area to continue the remembrance of that area while we, or while the boards and then the community determine what we want to do with the rest of the building. So that could be a bridge of sort to, to continue using that area in the short term, if we are not ready to make any decisions fall of 2018, from a financial standpoint.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So in, in anticipation of us beginning to work on the next CIP, we need to make some decisions here in the next few months, or live with what's in the CIP already, which is just almost hold the line, just patch it and let it sit for a while longer. So our, I guess I'm trying to get to a point where we have concrete yes-no answers that we have to answer. Who's going to own it, A or B? Where's the money going to come from? What's the priority of the uses of the building, of all the, all the options that we have? Because we don't need to do it all at one time, but we do need to put them in priority so we can get a, a master plan together. Is that part of what your team is putting together?
Well, I think we would be working with county staff to continue that work. There's been some preliminary work done, but I think that, you know, we need to decide, and probably have a joint committee, and look at this issue, because there may be some uses that the county wants to use the building for, and there may be some others that the school system wants to use for. So I think it really is a committee approach where both sides are represented, to look at the whole needs of the county as a whole.
Carson, thank you. I, I wrote down that I think we need to set down, put a timeline, calendar together of when the decisions, the key decisions need to be made, and make sure we work towards those, so we're not sitting here in 12 months going, okay, so what are we going to do? Because we know it's coming, and the decisions need to be made, to your point, and we do have just a placeholder in the CIP.
Right.
Be nice to have some more concrete facts.
I guess I'm, I'm going even a little bit further, Mr. Chairman, in that this new subcommittee, subcommittee, whatever it ends up being, it seems to me needs to take a bold stand, and put some stakes in the ground, and let the 10 of us react to the stakes in the ground, because trying to cobble together something from a committee of 12, or whatever it ends up being, adds to the length of time before any decisive decision to make. So I would urge that we have a relatively small subcommittee that gets bold, and puts stakes in the ground. This is what we want, and the priority, what we wanted, and the timeline, what we wanted, and let us react to it, rather than us trying to, as a committee of the whole, do what we're doing right now. God, I'm afraid Mr. Melton is right. We might end up 12 months from now, back in this room and not have made any progress. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Carson, to your point, I thought that was occurring already. I thought the last time we met, we had said that the county administrator and Eric, excuse me, Dr. Jones, were going to be addressing those issues, and come forward with, you know, what were the needs of the county, what was the needs of the schools, prioritize those needs, instead of us trying to find a use for the building, find a need for the building, based on what the needs are in the county and the schools.
Well, the proposal, excuse me.
Wait.
The proposal from the original committee is fairly clear, and what we need to do to go forward, I think. They, I think they even prioritize the greatest value add to the community of each one of the recommendations they said, they suggested. So, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
If I may. I was telling Ms. Harris, you know, before the meeting, I don't know what y'all's needs are from the school board side, you know, in terms of, you know, are you going to need to expand the administration building where you're at? I, I don't know. Similarly, you know, I need to hear from my county administrator on what our situation is in terms of our administration. Are we going to need that space one day? You know, I don't know at this point, but it seems like, you know, we could get that information fairly quickly together and do some projections. Do we have other needs? Now, we know we need the gymnasium, the ball fields. That's a given, as Valerie and I were talking before the meeting. Some of the parts of this school, I'm not sure we can repurpose, to be quite honest. You know, the old classrooms, you know, to the west, where, so I would like to see the county administrator's staff, you know, between the schools and the county administrator and his staff, come together, you know, with the priority of needs that, you know, could be potentially met, you know, with the repurposing of the, of the middle school.
So I guess, I guess the question becomes, where is that on your list of multiple things that you're trying to do? Build a new school, build a new bus garage, get ready for the new year, redistricting, et cetera, et cetera? And the second part of that is, given the first part of that, when can we have something that Mr. Williams was talking about? 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, March, what?
That's what working weekends are for. Mr. Chairman, I do have something to add that might be helpful.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
We already had the one committee, it was fairly large. Carson was on it, Kim was on it, Rick was there, I was there. I just want to make two points, I guess. One, the original middle school committee, who, the summary was made some time ago. When I saw this presentation, I just don't want anybody to walk out of here, or people looking at, at the archives or whatnot, to misinterpret. You had goal one, goal two, goal three. That was not the priorities that that original committee came up with. The priority number one, everybody agreed on, was that the front part of that school would be a museum to the black history, since that was the quote-unquote "black" school, and we wanted to honor that history. So I think that kind of got mushed into goal two slash goal three. So that's kind of my first point there, is that was without question the unanimous number one priority of that committee, and it had a lot of community input to it. So I, I would almost rewrite that if, if this is going to be used again to that being goal one and priority one. The other one is, I'm not sure I'd want to dilute a museum like that with administrative spaces, as in joint use. I think there should be a dedicated portion that would be a museum, that people wouldn't hesitate to be able to walk into and freely look at things on the walls, and, and so I'm not exactly sure what the setup in mind here is, but I, I would not want space co-use for administrative and museum purposes. I don't think that the original committee wanted that. So I will try to help Carson with, I had it on here, but I think our, our first priority was exactly what Mr. Williams was saying, and that was, when we had the presentation, and we were all sitting here some months ago, the first priority was determine the needs and costs, like you were saying, David, of both the county and the school board. And there was even a suggestion to make three little subcommittees up, sort of what you're saying. One subcommittee, small enough to be nimble, would look at the needs and costs, and talk to both sides of the county fence, so to speak. The second one was going to be determining the possibility of a 501(c)(3) to help fund the museum, and that doesn't take very many people. It could be three people. The third suggestion was, and I'm reaching deep here, the third suggestion was the public-private partnership. That was it. So there was a small subcommittee that was supposed to be organized to do that, and by default, if not done by subcommittees, then it was a county staff function on our side, and that was before you came, Ted. And, you know, you handle it however you want to, obviously, on the school board's side, but we did come up with three concrete things to do, and I have a feeling that those have not been even begun. So I would say, there's a place we can start. If that's not working, we can come up with, you know, massage that plan a little bit, but we did get that far. So there you go, there's my input. Thank you. Thank you.
The D O S has spoken. Quite any comments from school board members, if you're curious?
As he, Bill Bores and Ms. Harris.
Go ahead. Ms. Emel?
Well, I think that Mr. Nordvik is right. Somewhere in there, the first priority was the museum. We also talked about perhaps a museum in the library that could be a meeting room too, as well as serve that as a museum. There's that, and then I have to say that I know a lot of people would like to have the elementary part of the black school saved as well. And I, you said that was the lower B hall?
That's upper B.
Upper B hall, not the lower.
Not the lower.
Okay, and would that be admin space, right? No? Offices. Well, I do, I do know that we do need office space. I mean, I happened to be in Dr. Jones' office last year when it was winter, and I said, how come it's so cold in here? And, you know, he says, this is how it is. So I, you know, I can imagine the other offices need some re-purposing or re-work done to them. Also, I want to let both sides know of the board that Pocahontas Elementary School has always had a parking problem, and many parents have talked to me about how, when, if we do repurpose, if we will use some of the property from the middle school to, for them to park. Also, there's that lot there. People want to know about that lot. Who owns that lot? Do we, does the county own that lot or the school board or whoever? But adding, increasing parking spaces because you're definitely going to need the parking spaces there. To extend the park. And I think, I think, yeah, just those two things. The parking for the elementary and the extra, the black elementary school as the upper B hall. Or the historical ones, right? The historical parts are the upper B hall for the elementary school, and then the main, the library, the front offices is for the high school. So I know that's what the community wanted to save, if they, if we could, or what they were interested in saving.
Yes, Angie.
Did, Mr. Tibbs, I sort of reviewed, I regarded your priorities as more steps, like it's almost easiest to keep the gym right now. So we'll do that first, and then
Figure out.
Then the top priority after that is the library part. Is that
Yes.
More how it was intended? So not to take anything
Right.
Away, just, so, yeah, okay.
Great point, Angie. So what you're saying is his intentions were to show, we're going to keep, Mr. Williams said, we're going to keep the gym open, we're going to deal with the, we're going to deal with the fields, and then we'll figure out. I have a suggestion. I know Ted's kind of been in the job, what, about four months, five months now, so he's seeing all, a lot of this for the first time. I know he's digested a lot of, and we've talked about some of this over a short period of time. Maybe we get, let Ted and Dr. Jones get together the next 30 days and bring us a recommendation back, through emails or just directly, we don't have that joint meeting to have that, but let them get their heads together, bring us some recommendation back to how to, I think that we've articulated what we're looking for. And to give, you know, we will push them a little bit, but 30 days, I think, can at least give us an ideas of how we can put the timeframe or subcommittees or whatever it may be to, so that we're not sitting here twiddling our thumbs seven, six and seven months or whatever it is down the road, and we don't lose sight of the work that was done by that committee and the recommendations from the community. Thoughts, Joe?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments here. And I think, you know, we've got two things that the county staff can do, and that's certainly look to see what we need to do to keep the gym open for public use and decide how much office space or how much administrative space or storage space or whatever we need. We can do those two things. That third piece, the museum piece, you know, I'm not sure what's going to be the engine that makes that run. And, you know, I would suggest that perhaps we need to look at the Womack Oil Building as a model for how that works, where a private group or a semi-private group of some sort gets together and informs the 501(c) and comes to you, comes to us with a proposal that says, this is how much space we think we're going to need, and an idea of how much it's going to, you know, along with that, I would hope there'd be some study or some information about how much it's going to cost to maintain that on an annual basis. You know, so looking at the Womack Oil Building, looking at the Moat Museum and Prince Edward, you know, what does it cost budget-wise, you know, for that museum to stay open? How much space do they need? You know, because I think it's a little vague right now about how much space we should set aside for a museum. So, you know, I don't know who makes that decision, I don't know who guides that decision, but they would be my suggestions, is it, that people who have a passion about that begin to look at that information and help us in that decision-making as far as that museum goes. I think both these boards are committed to trying to make that, trying to help that happen, but I'm not sure, like I say, I'm not sure the engine is going to make that happen. In particular, I'm not sure of how big it's going to be and whether, and how that's going to be financed.
And I agree with Mr. Cole, and I apologize. I was just going to say, what my recollection of our last joint meeting was, was that we did talk about this issue about the creation of a 501(c)(3) or some sort of a nonprofit entity to manage that aspect of it, but I thought that the discussion was more focused on the fact that we would look to the members of the community, to groups within the community to come forward that wanted to play that role, not that our governmental entity, either the school board or the county government, reach out to any particular one group. I just, to me, that's a little bit, I'm not sure that's the right approach. I think we need to let the community step forward, whatever group that is, whatever organization that is, and let's, let's see what we can do together. But I think that's a dangerous road for us to begin to pick select groups that we want to do business with to encourage the establishment of 501(c)(3). That's my comment.
I was going to agree with my colleague here in District One, Rick, and I'm also now going to agree with you. Very good comments.
I asked Ms. Cattle, too, that the Palatin, the museum that's housed in the Old County Jail, which was once the county's, is now the historical, Palatin County Historical Society has taken that. I mean, they're responsible for that. So that, again, is a private entity that's running a public museum for our community.
But the county, the county does pay for the maintenance and heating and everything else in that facility.
Right.
But, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say that I think Mr. Norvik's comments are right, though, that if, if there's a group out there right now that is interested in playing some role in this, I think that now is the time for them to begin to have these discussions and to step forward and to reach out to Dr. Jones and Mr. Voorhees and talk about what their level of interest is.
Any other comments?
Just one side note. I think there's a built-in safety valve there, Joe, too, with, I used to be the director of a 501(c)(4), and I can tell you that no government entity can set up a 501(c)(3). They're not allowed to do that. So I think our job would be to facilitate, hey, you need a meeting room? Do you need somebody from the county staff there or the planning or whatever?
Right.
That would be about all we could do.
Right, no disagreement. I just...
Okay, so I guess we're okay, over fully formal motion. Motion that needs to be done, or any, I think we've given marching orders to both Dr. Jones and Mr. Voorhees. So we'll move on to the next.
Hold on, hold on. I'm not comfortable yet.
Okay.
It sounds like we're skirting the issue again to me. Whenever we have these discussions, we go back and forth between what, why, and how. And I guess what I would like Dr. Jones and Mr. Voorhees to do is answer the what question in a general broad brush before we start to augur down into how much is it going to cost and how we're going to divvy it up and who's responsible for it and what the ownership is. We've got this piece of land and this property, we've got to dispose of it in one way or the other. We can dispose of it in a gross way by bulldozing it at one extreme and go to the other extreme and just build a hell out of it and make it a public-private foundation, whatever we want to do. What I'd like to do is, is at least get an idea, and that's why I keep using the term stake in the ground. This is a vision that we have, that Dr. Jones and whomever he wants to appoint and Mr. Voorhees and whoever he wants to appoint. This is a vision for the best use of that property, given all the inputs that we've given them about history, about public-private, about costs, about ownership, and take a whack at it without getting sucked into the detail about how we're going to pay for it, who owns it, and all the other myriad of questions, which will come after we agree to the vision. So if we can get a vision that we all more or less agree to, then we can take the next step and say, how are we going to do this? Over what period of time are we going to do this? How are we going to fund this? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I thought that's what I was trying to request of Ted and Dr. Jones was to do just that, to go back and do what I thought was being done since our last meeting. That was coming up with what our needs are from the school and the county side and be able to associate those, prioritize those needs as it relates to that building.
Sounds like we're in heated agreement.
Huh?
Sounds like we're in heated agreement.
And I think, and I have the utmost confidence in the two of Dr. Jones and Mr. Voorhees that they fully understand it, and we've articulated well enough to know what we're looking for. And I think they're both intelligent enough that they need to reach out to a couple of board members or from each of the boards to try to get some input. I'm sure they'll do that, so unless they got questions, I think we move on. They nod their head over here, Carson, so they got him.
Can I ask one question, just for clarity? Could we set a date whereby that we revisit this issue?
That's a good idea.
Okay, 60 days?
Yeah, how long do you think?
What are they comfortable with?
What do you, Ted? You don't want to get, and come up with that and then get back with us? We're not putting you in a spot tonight. Y'all know your calendars better than we do.
Yeah. Are you looking, you're looking for something before the end of the year, I mean, 90 days, 120 days?
Well, what we ran into last year was the CIP and then the budgets starting and all too, so I think we want to kind of, yeah.
You know, you know me, I usually want it in like two weeks. I would think 60 days to me, because we're, to Ms. Emel's point and, you know, oh, we're nodding our head, we will be wrestling with budget and CIP come January, you know, and so the quicker we can at least have something.
When is our next joint meeting scheduled for?
Not till January, I thought.
December.
December. Okay, December.
So we put it on the agenda for the December?
We put it on, yeah, let me look here. Seems reasonable. December 4th.
That works.
So, December 4th.
Is that enough time?
That's a little more than 60 days.
Is that enough time?
Yep.
Sounds generous.
All right. Thank you, Joe, for clarifying, for the clarity on that.
December 4th? December 4th. We'll expect a report of some kind.
Okay.
Yes, obvious answer.
So, so just for the school board who's here, we do have a community meeting that was called, it will start when we finish. If people are coming in who are community meeting, they're following this meeting. Tentatively set for seven, we're going to finish our agenda and then we'll start that, but I didn't want anybody to get nervous as they start people coming in. And if you're sitting in the audience coming, then this joint meeting will start as close to, I mean, excuse me, the community meeting will start as close to seven as possible. So let's move on to item 10c, our presentation update on fleet maintenance and transportation that we toured. So hopefully this will move on.
Yep. Mr. Johnson's going to give a brief presentation on where we are with, you've seen the joint transportation facility and our tour. This is really about how we're going to manage and schedule and inventory and those types of things. We wanted to give you an update on that, and then we have a draft MOU that we'd like to share with both boards as we get ready to open this facility in November. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Also, we do have Brian Bartlett, our garage supervisor, here with us in case y'all ask any technical questions beyond how to change a spark plug or oil or tires, then he'll step in and help me out. Okay, so all of you were on the tour earlier and saw the progress that's being made with the garage. Some of the things that I want to brief you on tonight are the construction schedule, the current repairs that we're doing on school vehicles now and will do on county vehicles as well, some of the future repairs that we'll be looking to do, talk about the fleet maintenance software that we use, how to schedule service and repairs, talk about the fleet inventory that the county has, and then also go over the joint memorandum of understanding and then handle any questions that you may have. The, this project is being completed in two phases. The first phase you toured today, which is the construction of the new facility. Once that is complete, which should be late October, at the latest, early November, the garage technicians and transportation staff will move into that facility, and once that's done, phase two will start. Phase two is to demolition the current building, put a canopy over the existing fueling tanks, do lot grading and landscaping. So we are hoping that in sometime in November is our goal to be able to be in the position to start doing maintenance on county vehicles. This is some of the current repair services that we provide, general maintenance, oil changes, state inspections, transmission injector flushes, suspension repairs, diagnostics, exhaust work, just light maintenance items. These are some of the things that we are wanting to do, we will be doing once we get in the new facility. Included in the budget is some owner equipment, and some of those pieces of equipment are a tire balancer and tire changer. We outsource that, the county outsources that. When we get those pieces of equipment, we'll be doing that in-house and are excited about that. Front-end alignments and major drive train replacements we'll be doing as well, since we'll have a facility that you have the capability to do that. Talk to you a little bit about our fleet maintenance software that we've been using. This software handles our parts inventory as well as tracks the repairs that we do to each of our vehicles so we can do life history reports on our vehicles. We will, for the county, be preparing an invoice on each vehicle that we service. That invoice is going to look like invoices that you see now when you take your car to the shop. It's going to have what we did, it's going to have any parts that we had to replace, it will have the technician's name that did the repair work and the length of time that it took us to do that repair work. Because our software system tracks our parts inventory, it also tells us if we have to replace a part that's still under warranty, it lets us know that so we can go back to that supplier and get a credit for that part because it failed before the warranty was up. And of course, as you look at the MOU later on, you'll see that whatever credits that we get on county vehicles would be passed back to the county with this agreement. In addition to individual invoices, we can do monthly billings. The system will print monthly billings for, by department. We can also do reports on county vehicles, life-to-date reports on county vehicles, just like we can with ours. On scheduling services and repairs, on routine maintenance, we intend to do the county vehicles just like we do ours. On our vehicles, when our drivers fuel them in our fueling system, they enter the mileage, and so that system will notify us when a vehicle is approaching, say, 200 miles of a required service, and so we then can schedule that. We can do the same thing with the county so that we stay on track with the vehicle specifications of when each specific vehicle is required to have maintenance. So we'll do that. If there are emergency or unscheduled repairs, we do occasionally with our vehicles and can do so with county vehicles, do either a roadside service depending on what it is that's wrong, or have a tow truck pick the vehicle up and bring it to the shop, or take it somewhere else if it's something that we do not do and that needs to be outsourced. The repair time, routine maintenance such as oil changes, state inspections and those type of things, take about an hour. If during that inspection we find something that needs to be replaced, such as bulbs or wiper blades or tires or something, then it may take a little bit longer, but it's... But it's a pretty good turnaround time on that. And we have for years operated with four mechanics plus the supervisor who also is a mechanic or technician. We have added a fifth one in preparation for this, so I think we could, you know, commit to the turnaround times. Also, we shouldn't really run into priority issues. I mean, we make decisions on priority issues all the time now with how we service vehicles. We'll do the same thing when we're doing sheriff, fire, EMS and county vehicles as well. One of the things that drives and helps with that decision is if there are replacement, if there's a spare vehicle to use for that department, those that don't, obviously they'll have a higher, higher priority. And so that will be discussed at the time the vehicle's scheduled for service and, you know, we'll do that just as we are doing it today. So let's talk about the fleet assets, which is the county vehicles. Currently, we have a list of all county vehicles because the county vehicles fuel with us. But what we don't have are history on each vehicle. When was the last time that vehicle was serviced? And we'll need to get that. We've, Brian has been working with sheriff's department to start getting information on their vehicles so that we can set the system up to notify us when it is serviced. And how far back we go on the history of that vehicle will be dependent upon the department. But we can go back in time to the extent the departments want to give us the information. We did, when we implemented this fleet software system for the school division, it took us quite a while, but we did go back on and did a complete history on all of our current vehicles. Parts inventory, we will increase our inventory in the new garage for servicing of county vehicles. And that's going, what we add, obviously, we're going to need to add, you know, more tires and so forth that are going to fit the sheriff vehicles and other parts, those things will be decided as we go based upon what we see as being used the most. But we also had delivery with vendors, just like any garage does, where we can get something in within, you know, a day or so. We have purchased new additional tools for the mechanic that we've added. Right now, I'm not envisioning us needing to add any tools that are specific just to county vehicles. If we do, you know, come up on that at some point in time, for example, diagnostics, the diagnostics that we have now, I think are going to be okay. But if we do run into something, we can just discuss that at that time if it's an expensive item. And if it is, what the plan is, is to, we've got a labor rate and we would just factor that in joint decision as to how we would recapture, you know, that going forward in the future. So let's talk about the labor rate. What we, you know, if you go out in the commercial market, you know, you may be paying eighty-five dollars an hour, more or less. Right now, we get for our warranty work, we're given a fifty-six dollar per hour credit. However, based upon the hourly wages of our technicians, their benefits, retirement and health, workers' comp, those type of things, we have a labor rate of, we're going to be using a labor rate of forty-five dollars. And on parts, some commercial vendors have as high as a forty percent markup, some of it may be as low as twenty percent. We're not marking up parts at all. Whatever the cost is for the parts that we get is what the, you know, will be on the bill, on the invoice to the county is just that. I mean, the whole thing, the whole reason we were doing this is for all of us to save money. So that's, you know, that's what we're going to be doing. And as I said earlier, if we get any return credits on any county vehicle, that return credit will be passed back to the county. We do have a draft memorandum of understanding that we are asking that the school board and board of supervisors agree to. And this is something that, you know, we can review each year because it does have a labor rate in there and that labor rate is subject to change July of each year if there are any wage changes or benefit cost changes or anything like that. But it, you know, would be reviewed each year. The term of the agreement would coincide with our physical year, which is our budget year and, you know, all of that. Everything that we do, all of our costs and so forth are already subject to audit because we're a component unit within the county CAFER. And so, you know, if, if the board of supervisors, the county staff wish to look at anything more in-depth in the audit, it's public records. And so, you know, it's all there for whatever you want to look at. And so with that, are there any questions?
Just, just a comment, having read through the MOU, and I think Ted, Ted had been participating in it, I think he's very comfortable with it. If it looks like it's going to have a November date, we would need to have it on our October agenda to make sure we pass. I guess our county, we need to get it by our county attorney. If he hasn't seen it, he may have already seen it, I don't know. But the labor rate, I think, is very generous, you know. And as we all talked about, the savings will be incurred because of that. And I know that some dialogue's been going on between the sheriff and staff on priority of vehicles and how quickly I can get one repaired when I need one and all those things. So I, kudos to y'all for all the work that's gone into this. As Mr. Tucker and I were talking today when we were down there, this building's been in need of repair, it's been on the CIP for twenty-plus years. It was, it probably needed to be replaced thirty years ago. So we're looking forward to the, the building getting finished and, and this up and operational. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question. Have you given any consideration to not turning down the old garage and making that a museum?
No, sir. Not, not one second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One question and then a comment. Have we jettisoned the idea of a joint oversight committee to oversee the bus garage and just transferred the whole responsibility of management to the school system? Once upon a time, we talked about having a committee to oversee a lot of these details. Have we jettisoned that idea? Okay.
Yes.
I think what we had talked about, and this was with, in a conversation with Ms. Wyler before she left, is that because we have an inventory system already and we have so much of the information, it just makes sense from an efficiency standpoint for us to manage it. We were, our understanding was that the MOU would kind of cover both sides and that it would be, you know, there's language in there to look at it yearly and to look at what the costs are. So that's, that's where we have been heading for the last several months, yes.
All right. I'm okay with it. I just wanted to know what happened to the idea. The comment I have is that what we saw today at the middle school and at the bus garage and at the water tower, I think speaks very highly of the professionalism of the school staff, particularly Mr. Johnson, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Bartlett and Mr. Tibbs. I think keeping us informed is a, is a great idea and the level of detail that you're sharing with us, the regular report out, the fact that there doesn't seem to be any problems ongoing. Remarkable, remarkable. And thank you very much from all of us for doing this, all of what you're doing. Great work.
Appreciate that.
It's on time and on budget.
That's right. That's our motto.
Yeah, what he said.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Larry, thanks for the presentation. I'm, I'm not looking for a solution, I'm looking for just information or a comment. June twenty-sixth, the EDA hosted a presentation and the board was there, many people up here and some out there were at that presentation. And basically, the gist of it was that foundational in the economic health of Palatine County was take your small businesses that exist and do what you can to keep those plates spinning and grow and prosper what you have already got. So here's what I'm asking, I'm, you know, and Brian, if you need to pitch in, go ahead. We're turning over work that maybe some Palatine repair facilities that are privately owned used to do, and now we're flipping that to the county operation, which I think is the right way to go. But has anybody reached out? Do we have any idea what the impact on our local economy is by taking that business away from the local body shops and automotive repair places?
I do not, but I do want to tell you one thing about one of the local shops. One of the local shops was going to close down and that's where we got our fifth technician from. And so that was a win-win situation for him and us. But no, sir, I, I do not know what that impact is.
I believe I understand, Brian, you can jump in here. I believe that there has been communication from sheriff's department to some of these shops, letting them know that this was coming and that there was going to be an impact and what the timeframe was so they weren't caught unaware.
I think there is going to be, the, the communication has gone on, the impact there is going to be minimal. I think what we are going to gain as a county is the efficiency and productivity and the turnaround of our vehicles versus a shop that's out and has a lot of people because we're going to concentrate on our vehicles and getting them back in service. An example of that is a fire truck. If we send one of those out to a vendor, it doesn't go to necessarily a lot of places in the county. It goes out and that vehicle's three days out of service. That's not an easily vehicle to replace. So being able to diagnose it with a computer, maybe replace a sensor and have it back in unless it's time is the, the key. Impact as far as that, until I can really get a count of what vehicles we have and what's been done to them and where they've gone and what goes on, I can't give you that kind of information yet.
Okay. If I may, could I request, I guess that would be from you, Ted, could I get that information when you have it? Brian, can you pass it along?
Yeah, I don't see why.
Dr. Jones, whoever, whoever gets that at the top of the pyramid there.
You can look in your, your budget stuff, it'll show you how much the county sheriff's department's been speaking on vehicle maintenance. And you can assume that a portion of that was, was, you know, from, from county vendors.
But that, that's part of it, and Brian knows, like, you won't be doing the work on the brakes on sheriff's cars, for example, right? Because they're high capacity or?
No, we should still be able to do those.
Oh, you are, okay.
There's no differentiation in that. As far as the repair to that car is no different than any other vehicle, it's just the material and the parts you use.
Okay.
The diagnostics there, we have all of that, that ability to do. It's just the parts placement is different.
And I just heard.
A T R S that you or I would drive versus a police enforcer one or one of the Dodges is different parts.
Okay. And I just heard Dr. Jones mentioned body work, special equipment, obviously, on the inside and that kind of thing, but, okay.
As far as I know, with the, the sheriff's department, the fire department and the rescue, any radio communications, things like that, that's going to be outsourced. A lot of their lights and that specialized stuff that's installed, that's all going to be outsourced, just like it normally is already. We don't have the capability of a body shop to be able to do body repairs or paint, so that's still going to go to outside vendors. It may so also justify in getting a police vehicle back in service that it has to go to an outside vendor. We can't keep, we can't be closed-minded in keeping everything in-house one hundred percent. We have to be looking at efficiency and productivity and getting a vehicle back in service.
Right. Thank you very much, appreciate the answer.
Thank you, Larry, for your question.
Yep.
Any more on this comment? I mean, on this topic, we'll move to the last topic on the agenda tonight. For those of you in the audience that came for the community meeting, we do apologize. We should be wrapping up shortly. We're now going to presentation on guaranteed energy savings contracting. It's on page thirty-one if you're following on your computers. And who's taking that?
I will, I will do that and I will go through this as quickly as possible, Mr. Chairman.
We don't want to cut anybody short.
Nope, it's fine because this is really just meant as information for the board of supervisors. This presentation's already been given to the school board. It's really some conversations that we've been having with an energy service company, Train, about some energy savings that we can possibly leverage to some capital dollars. If you want to look at page five of the presentation, benefits of performance contracting, I think this is an important slide. There's no out-of-pocket money required. It allows us to replace outdated equipment and modernize it. There are guaranteed savings that the ESCO, our energy savings company, would guarantee us as part of this. And it's being done all over the state, all over the country. It is an opportunity to upgrade, as Mr. Melton said earlier, upgrade some systems that already need updating and realize those savings over a number of years to pay for them. On the next slide is kind of a map of Virginia that shows, and this is just Train, one ESCO, all the work that they're doing throughout the state and to make sure that they, you know, they have some expertise in this area, obviously. The next slide on Palatine schools, you can see that they have estimated out each of our schools that they've studied, Pocahontas Elementary to see what kind of savings we could have there, Palatine High School. And were the two main schools that they were looking at. And then there's a list of conservation measures, lighting, building automation systems, building envelope improvements, HVAC improvements, replacements. We did not, or have not at this point, had them look at Pocahontas Middle School just because of the uncertainty of what was moving forward at that school, but we can certainly add that to the list. Obviously, the new schools being built is going to be state-of-the-art and already up-to-date. So really, those were the schools that we were looking at, that they were as interested in. We, what the preliminary estimates, and right now they're doing a more in-depth study of all of our systems, is that they would be able to provide us two and a half to three and a half million dollars in capital dollars through the savings realized as part of this project that could then be put to capital projects identified by the boards as part of the CIP. So it's exciting, us looking forward to it. We will continue to bring you information. I believe that Train is meeting with county staff in the near future to talk about some county facilities. I'll let Mr. Voorhees, if there's anything you want to add on that matter.
I think that's a great overview. It is an opportunity and we did talk with our financial advisors about the county's debt capacity to, to carry this. And we seem to have a pretty comfortable margin there to be able to do this. So we look forward to seeing if there are opportunities on other than school facilities as well.
Is there a downside?
Well, I'm, just to be, it's a great question. The downside to, to the two downsides that I would just point out, having gone through some of these in other jurisdictions before, is you do have to give up some control of operating your building because that's how they're generating the savings. So if you like to be in the habit of turning your thermostat up or down at will or responding, not to be flip, but sort of willy-nilly to the whims of the folks in the building, you are going to have a very difficult time achieving the cost savings. And so what you're essentially doing is contracting to, you know, with a company to set those parameters and, and be efficient. And so now there are, there are limits in the contract, so if they're not able to, to set the building into a comfortable zone of operation, then they will not be in compliance and you have opportunities to have that corrected or, or the savings that are supposed to be materialized are not on your side, they're, they're, the company has to pay. That's typically the way those contracts are set up. So, so you should get a habitable building, but you will lose control of those systems because they'll be operated by others. So that's one issue. And the other is you have to look at the financing piece and make sure that the rate of return and the cost of money that are figured into these agreements is, is fair and reasonable because as a public entity, we can typically get the best borrowing rates in this very low interest rate market. It's probably likely that the ESCOs are, are also providing pretty, pretty good funding rates. But, but it is something that you should pay attention to, make sure you can't do it more cheaply.
So the expectation is a net savings, however, right? Otherwise, it's a no-go.
That's correct. That's why the detailed analysis is necessary. You get these high-level looks that schools have already done. When you see opportunity, then you do the deeper dive and you can identify projects and sort of decide, do we want to do the whole bundle or, or there's some low-hanging fruit that you want to do? And then maybe some other things that are of a, less of a return and maybe those things don't get done.
Ted, I've got a question. You say there's no upfront cost. Where does the money come from?
So the fin, the financing is from the ESCOs. They're, they're going to bring a financing package forward, they'll do the improvements and then they're paid back with the. They'll do the improvements, and then they're paid back with the savings over time from reduced expenditure on, on the energy side typically.
So when you say they'll do the financing, is that meaning that they're going to finance the capital investment for the improvements on the facilities themselves?
Yes.
So this is not going to be showing up on their debt?
Well, it, it, it's a secondary level of debt. So it, it is something that you have to, that, that is shown, but it, it's, we have-
So it still fall within our debt policies?
Policy, fifteen percent, yeah.
Okay.
Again, I want to say, bravo. This is exactly kind of an initiative we like.
Perfect.
May I just add? Mackinaw Walker Governor's School did this, I believe, two years ago, and we've seen significant savings, and, and the money has gone back into the capital, capital fund at Mackinaw. So it was a, it was definitely a win-win for Dr. Jones, and I know for ten, it was a win-win for Mackinaw.
So Valerie, let me follow up then, being as you all have done, and I think you told me about this before. So you're saying that the savings equal the amount that the financing that we would have to repay to the energy-saving company? It's, it would meet that debt obliga, debt obligation in savings?
And then some, sometimes. Because if they don't meet, and Dr. Jones, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if they don't meet that obligation that they had told us they will meet, they pay, it comes out of their pocket. It doesn't come out of Mackinaw Walker's pocket. So it really is a win-win.
Yeah. Ted, does North Carolina have legislation that covers these types of businesses?
Yes, sir, there are, there are, the state encourages ESCO operations in North Carolina for state and local government.
And they've, they've got code that governs how they work, I believe.
There are, there are rules that the state has promulgated about it, yes.
Yeah. How about the state of Virginia?
I haven't looked into that, so I can't answer that question.
Obviously, it must be David's, there's, there's like fourteen schools already listed, school system's already listed on here, many governmental buildings.
No, my, my question was, do you have state regulations? Is this something in the Code of Virginia that, like it is in North Carolina, that regulates these, these companies? Because on, when I was trying to get some information, I looked and I brought up something from North Carolina where they talked about it, but I didn't see anything for Virginia, so.
Well, I, I'm going to defer to, not, not throwing anyone under the bus garage here, but the, the, the school staff, you know, took the lead on this, and I'm, I know that they have peer jurisdictions that have done some of this work, and it's certainly been, we talked about doing this, I think, when I was on the school board in Fairfax back in the eighties. It's, it, you know, it's an innovative practice that's become more and more standard. But I, I do think that North Carolina and Virginia differ in some ways on how much flexibility they allow local jurisdictions to exercise and, and where they put the regulations. So I wouldn't necessarily chalk it up to an issue or a problem if Virginia's regulatory framework is, is different. But I think you certainly make a good point, that we would want to make sure we talk to our peers about the, the regulatory framework and the, and the safeguards that are, are good practice, and that we make sure we put those in place if we pursue this here.
Typically, Ted, how long is the financing for? Is it twenty years, eighteen years?
Yeah, this, this is usually longer-term financing. I think the nature of the projects also dictates that. There may be legislation in some jurisdictions that limits it. I think twenty is a typical time horizon. Some may want to go thirty. That seems to be kind of the outside limit for what makes sense. But I would think between ten and twenty would be what you'd typically find.
And do they look at the life of the capital investment that they make?
Exactly.
And put that against the financing?
Exactly. You don't want to be paying for things that you have to replace again before they're paid for.
So are we going to be getting a presentation or workshop on this at some point?
Yes, sir, this is really just the te-
Okay, well, I'm not going-
To tee it up. This is to tee it up, that we, we like to continue to move down this path, and the schools have done a, a level of due diligence, and now they're prepared to move down a more detailed path and bring a, a more specific package.
I'll, I'll hold my questions till then.
Mr. Chairman, if I could to, I, I know that there is an attorney up here, and I'm not the individual, but it's, it's, quick search is section eleven, thirty-four point three of the Code of Virginia addresses energy performance-based contract procedures. It does address the twenty-year rule that you talked about, and there's, there's clearly quite a bit of general simply activity built around the structure, so Dr. Jones and the staff can bring that back to you.
Who's the attorney up here?
Nobody.
Is that right?
Oh, you!
Well, we won't hold it again.
That was going to be embarrassing if I was wrong on that. I don't pretend to play one, either.
Smart. Any other comments or questions? Dr. Jones, thank you, Ted, thank you for your comments, and we look forward to continuing dialogue on this and how, way in of ways, any of the ways to advantage budget and, and energy savings. So thank you. We'll now move on to our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing that I'll close the second public, oh, excuse me, I apologize. After you've finished speaking, will you please sign in? Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Andrew Schnee, I live at thirty-seven ten Matons Road. And this evening, I'll just be speaking on behalf of the NAACP. I'm the vice president. So thank you very much for all your hard work and your cooperation of both of the boards, the staff. We appreciate it. And again, we understand courageous conversation, and we understand critical thinking, and we understand the choices that you have to make. And so we appreciate that. And we are here to partner, as we said before, we're here to partner. And so again, letting you know that, and again, we will come back, and we will be prepared, you know, in that ninety, sixty days, we'll be prepared, and we'll be talking with Dr. Jones and the county administrator. And again, we'll work as hard as we can to make this work for everyone. But I got to say this now, I have to say this, I find no humor in sarcasm.
Thank you, Mr. Schnee. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward at this time. Seeing that I'll close the second public comment period. We, do we have a county administrator or superintendent comments?
I have no, no further comments. No comments.
Okay. Any board member comments from their side? School board?
I want to ask, we can do our board comments, and if you can adjourn if you're-
Yes, by all means.
You can move on with your-
Yeah, we got to close this meeting anyway, because this is a community meeting.
Okay. Is, is, are there comments from any members of the school board?
Just to thank everyone for being here tonight.
And what a wonderful new beginnings. No offense, Mr. Melton, I think it's thirty years, not twenty, for this bus garage, is that right? In, in any case, it's very exciting, and it just goes to show what we can do, two boards working together and helping the citizens of this county. And I hope the people that are here that came to hear about the future use of the middle school building, I hope that you will contact Dr. Jones, five-nine-eight-five-seven-zero-zero. I don't know the administration's office, but I know that Dr. Jones-
Fifty-six twelve.
Okay, fifty-six twelve. I know that Dr. Jones will be interested in hearing what you want to do, so please step forward now and, and, and get your ideas and thoughts known to him. Thank you.
Mr. Cole?
I have no comments.
All right, thank you. I just want to say that I think tonight was, the tour was wonderful. I appreciate the staff and the schools in helping to put that together and taking the time to lead us through the building. I, I for one thought that it was remarkable to see the progress that's been made, to look at what was there before, or think about what was there before and see what's there now. And I think it's a real tribute to the collaborative efforts of both the county government and the school board, and where we are today down the street with those three projects. And I think that that's a very nice representation of that and the, the spirit that's in this county. I want to take the opportunity very quickly to say, if you'll check the school, the school website, we have several different advisory groups that we are seeking public input for. We need membership. We're looking for members of the community to step out. Very quickly, the Special Education Advisory Committee, Gifted Education Advisory Committee, Title I Parent Advisory Committee, School Health Advisory Committee, and the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. We would welcome the input and the participation of any members of the community that would like to serve on any of those advisory groups. They play a critical role to the success of the schools. And I will say too, very quickly, that we are beginning our process now developing our new six-year strategic plan with the school system, with the county. The planning is critical, and we will be working on that very diligently. And all of the groups that I mentioned previously, they certainly play a role in that, and we would very much appreciate anyone that is interested in serving on those committees. The application process is on the school website. Take a moment, submit your application. Dr. Jones or member of his staff will contact you, and we will, again, just would, would encourage people, find a way to be involved, and this, this could be exactly what you're looking for. And again, thank you to the staff. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the board of supervisors adjourn.
I'll, I'll second the motion. All in favor from the board? Aye. And opposed? Motion passes five-zero. And is there a motion from the school board to adjourn this evening?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion. Mr. Cole is second in the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four-oh, no opposed. Thank you all.